Meeting to order and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll pop.
Myler.
Here.
Trail.
Here.
Spence.
Here.
TC.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
Any conflicts of interest to declare? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
It's a motion and a second to approve the agenda, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move to approve the minutes?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any visitors to be heard? Lenaya.
So right now is kind of one of our many busy seasons of the year. I feel like it's always busy season. Our review deadline is November first and we are short staffed right now, so we're just gonna be out on the road a lot. I wanted it to be in the minutes that people should probably call before they stop into the office. We can forward calls to our phone and often Melissa and I are both out in the north part of the county.
Okay, well, thank you for the heads up, I'm sure people will appreciate it. All right. Got a few, few items here.
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Have a driveway up for Cameron Johnson. The existing driveway, is there no culvert? But he wants to widen it out, which I told him. The first time he did it, it needed to be wider, but. He filled out the application and. I recommend you approve it, everything's fine and I have the check accompanying the permit.
I move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve, is there any further discussion?
Approve the installment plan.
All right, then. There's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Oh, thanks. All right, and update on road projects.
Yeah, so. We're not gonna do our chip sealing this year, it's getting too late in the season. And with. Regulations for recommendations for chip sealing. Not if it's gonna get to seventy. Before you start, it usually has to be at least sixty-five before you can spray the oil, so you can get attacked and. Some couple of days, it ain't been a problem, but. The company that is doing it also agreed with me that we should hold off and they're gonna honor the contract. For next year, so it'll be the same price anyway, so we just feel that it's. Better to hold off, we've had that go south on us and the chips don't stick and. And you could just, well, forget about it.
Who's the company, company we?
Um.
Aztec.
Aztec, okay.
They were the ones that done our micro servicing before too, so.
Do you have that in an email or writing from them that they're gonna?
Brad's getting them to redo the contract. So we have the same amount, you know, same cost per mile, oil and everything, so.
So what do we do next year, Carrie, just do a supplement then, because that won't have been?
Yep.
Yeah, that was my other question is, do you earmark it out of this year's? Budget then, or just?
It just.
Next year.
It just stays in the fund and we'll just supplement next year.
Okay, we'll take it out of your budget.
Yep.
We won't add anything to it.
Um. Then, also. It's getting kind of late in the year for paving, so we didn't want to take a chance on milling up West Main, that's why nothing's happened. There, they came in, or they didn't come in when they were supposed to, two weeks later, they're. Not sure when they could come, so we just said we need to move that to next year too, same way, gets. Too cold, try to stay with the state specs on, you know. Usually they don't pave after the fifteenth of October. So we didn't want to get right in the middle of that and then have the same. You know, something happened when that was chip sealed, why it's coming off? So we want to make sure we get it right, so we backed that off and that was kind of a. If we have time project, we're gonna do it, so. We're gonna wait, do that, we picked up barricades back up, because they. We put in the paper that we're gonna do it starting that one Monday and they never even called us a whole week and. So we, we backed off on that, so I got busy with. Matching up asphalt where the flood had been and turning Lincoln County and it took them longer than they thought, so. We're just gonna. Get on there because less mobility, we'd have to mobilization, we'd have to pay, but.
And who's the contractor on that one?
Ah, that was Louisa. I think it's called Midwest Milling or, but it's under Louisa Construction. Their umbrella. They have like three of those asphalt mills and they're. You never know where they're gonna be.
And it's spelled exactly opposite of how it sounds.
Oh, okay. I was like, I have no idea how to spell this, I'm going phonetic, so, all right.
Yeah, L O U I S.
Yeah, it's like Louis.
U B M O A or something.
I have his.
I know, I know what it is, but I, yeah. Also. The Dakota Street Dawson Bridge and that first bridge off of Highway nineteen on three oh six. We got that one added to the ER listing. So federal highway. Give us their estimates and to. Do the Dawson Road Bridge, which is one oh eight, two thirteen for the record. To remove all the riprap or to add riprap and remove the debris and stabilize the bait. They're at a million dollars on that one. Dakota Street Bridge. Same way, we gotta fix the wing walls and the back wall again, that's at a million seven. And the one on three oh six east to nineteen is at five hundred and eleven thousand. Basically. We've already did the debris removal and that stuff, but. I just talked to Vanessa this morning about filling in the hole down there by the Dakota Street. And now federal highways all worried about. The notorious bats have hibernated in the trees that blow down. So now we gotta deal with. That, so we're meeting with Vanessa tomorrow. Alltag, she works for Alltag. So she's coming down and see if we can get in there. Cause anything we can do before the fifth of April, we get a hundred percent reimbursed. Anything after April, it's eighty twenty on the federal highway thing. So, and the, no way the, all these bridges are getting done. We'll be lucky if they all get done next year. Just for how much damage and what all we have to go through. But we figured we could fill the hole in, that's something we can actually do ourselves. So we're meeting with her to see if we can get in and I gotta get permission from Dave Brunick. Which he already pretty much said that wouldn't be a problem. So see if we can get in there and we can push it in that washout on the west side of the bridge without having to. Remove any trees, we're gonna have to get something filled in there before they can reach the trees that are in the river anyway. So. That's kind of the updates on where we're at with them still slow when it goes through. An engineer and federal highway at the same time, they're not quite as slow ERs, not quite as slow as FEMA. But they push it. And they're kind of quoting to Vanessa this morning, now they're having second plots on what should be. They think they need to add more to it, what needs to be done, so I assume these prices will go up in the future.
The headline is tight and very serious.
Two, two hundred and seventy-five days from. The day we meet with them and of course, they were so busy, you know, it. We didn't meet with them till what, August? Sometime, first part of August before they could get down here.
Any way we could get it done before then, that's a four hundred thousand dollar.
No, because you gotta let it out for bids, you gotta, all that.
Wow. Frank for no snow.
Yep.
Nice weather.
Yep.
All there.
And that would even be pushing.
And we had that last one, so I don't think we're gonna get it two years early.
Yep.
We had nice winter last year.
Well, they got work on the critical winter.
Yeah.
Pushing snow every weekend seemed like it'd be. I figured seeing so, it's gonna be my last one, we're due for twenty-seven feet. But anyway. That's, and there was one thing, it's just a quick thing about ditch board, that one culvert. I'm not sure, three eleven and four fifty-three maybe, that everybody thought it was separated. That ended out up, and I got pictures and I should have brought one, there was absolutely no bottom. The top looked brand new, the bottom was gone, that's why it caved in. But just while you're wondering, we didn't put a band or was nothing to band. And we do have two checks from old culverts, hundred dollars for each. That go back into the. I think it's lateral one and A and two A or something, but anyway. That's all I have for updates.
I got a question, it's not our problem, I know. You know, are they gonna fix the shoulders up on North nineteen before it snows and it snowfalls?
They're working on it right now.
Oh, are they?
Holman, Holman has the bid, actually, I believe he's got everything on nineteen back up. To the edge of the road and waiting on the bridge, the rail. Guard rail crew to come in and then they're working on forty-six. They'll be going that way, I don't know if he's completely to nineteen, his equipment was set in south of forty-six there. But yeah, he's pretty much got it.
You've got most of it.
Yeah. That would be quite a rush to catch an edge, some of that was six to eight feet deep up there. And our blade guy is on East County line today, sometime today, so. I, I had a couple of calls myself, so.
Did you?
Yep.
Circling back to those first three bridges. Just looking at. The bridge down, down here, going to the airport. If we had another flood this spring.
Won't be good.
Maybe not have a bridge left to fix. South side, the south side would be gone.
Got those two big washouts back there.
Yep, that's what we've been saying also and.
Dawson is probably.
Dawson, I'm not worried about that one too much.
And I, I haven't looked at the one up north, but. House bridge down here, I really have some concern about.
That's our priority is Dakota Street Bridge.
Yeah.
That's the first thing we working on.
And that's the one point seven million too, so the best one to get the hundred percent reimbursement on.
Yeah. So, I mean, twenty percent is still quite a chunk of money.
Yeah.
I know eighty percent, that's a good thing, but unfortunately, we're not gonna get. That's why I want to get started, we, if we finish up our, what paving we got. To do this week and start hauling, can start hauling dirt in there. Next week, we have a pile at Brower's plus Holman out here at Heine's pit has a pile of. Just, it won't work for nothing else and they don't really care, as long as it doesn't have a lot of iron. In, in it, we can pretty much dump anything in that washout. And I'd really like to get going on that, so. That's kind of the plan at the moment, we'll meet with Vanessa in the morning, we'll know more tomorrow, I guess.
So do, do you think there's a chance we could get that one done before April first?
No.
Not all of it, I think we could get the washout filled in and maybe get somebody in there to. Do the tree removal and like Travis said, depend on the winter, we might be able to get the bait. Stabilized, because when you're working with riprap, that really isn't a problem. But we gotta be able to get everything. Up to where we gotta put the riprap in, you know, in. A lot of riprap on the west side, they're talking. Maybe three hundred feet. On both sides of the river on the west side. So, and they were surveying last week. So when they get done surveying, we'll know more how far. The project is going, that's why I mean this, well, more likely it's gonna go up.
Yeah, how are we gonna rip rap the north side?
Yeah, talk to the city and we're gonna have to. Get in there and make a spot, clear a spot out and. Unless the city wants to do it. But yeah. That's gonna be fun going through that parking lot. The west or the east side, that ain't gonna be too bad to get in on there, still gonna have to take a couple of trees out. So we can get in next to the river. But if it actually. Does come and stays as low, we can also do a bridge across the river like we did. Up on three hundred ninth street to get out, get the trees out, we could work from the south side. That all depends on the flow and what time we get, you know, get there. But. We'll have to let out a couple. Pretty big projects there, because that's way beyond our means. To get out in there with, we don't have the equipment for that, unfortunately. We don't have the manpower for that either.
But we have to fund all this first.
Yeah.
Yeah, which, so. That brings me to the next point, which I was gonna bring up later, but. So we moved this year's chip sealing to next year, the money that's in the budget for next year for chip sealing and. Micro servicing, we already kind of, after this deal, are kind of looking at. We could use that money. To fund the bridges, but there ain't enough in there. For all of it. And I'm, that bridge east to nineteen, I'm not wanting to fix it. Next year is supposed to get a deck replaced on it and I'm trying to talk them into replacing it. And I want it wider. And maybe set at a skew because that water coming from the north, it's that northwest corner and. I mean, we fixed the northeast corner and that washed out, now the. The northwest corner is undermined and I just think we're. For some reason, federal highway is very generous this year, like I told you, letting us put the Pleximatt. Down without any argument. I'm glad we had that one piece in there so they could see how it worked. And it worked excellent, all except for a tree branch catching on it as it went over, pulled it up one spot, but. So yeah, we're still discussing on, I mean, we're talking five hundred eleven dollars to fix an old bridge. And we're gonna spend another four hundred to do the deck. So I, I don't know what a new bridge would cost, but I'm working on. Alltag to get a cost estimate for a new bridge in there. That needs it worse than. Got a little creek just. A tremendous water, amount of water comes through there that it needs to be wider first off. It ain't near wide enough, that's a nineteen. Sixty-eight, seventy-two bridge, I don't, don't remember for sure, but doesn't say on here. What year it was built. There's a stamp on it, I don't remember what it, I think they did the river bridge in that one at the same time, I'm not sure. So. That's all I have for that.
And then you had update on new hire for administrative assistant.
Yes. Yeah. So I ain't gonna say anything about HR, just not very happy with HR, that's all farther I'm going. But I had to go contact the lady myself. They tried to get ahold of her once and they just ended with that. And so as of right now, I sent her the acceptance letter, talked to her face to face. And it sounds like. When she gives her two weeks notice and signs that letter, I'll be back, but. I don't know if I can tell you her name, I don't know. If that.
If she hasn't given notice. If she hasn't had an opportunity to give notice to her employer.
So, and, so yeah, kind of. Open to get in it, our secretary now is not working out real well, so. I need to get somebody in there sooner than later. But I understand and I. I always appreciate them giving us two weeks notice, so I totally understand not burning any bridges, you just never know. So I'm hoping by the sixteenth, the earliest, other words, probably the twenty-first. Depends on when she. I guess I could, I might be able to tell you if she. Nope. I thought maybe she emailed me back since, she emailed me this morning, so. That's where we stand with her, we have a. Pretty sure we have one, so.
Anything else for us?
That's enough, ain't it?
All right, thank you, Rod. We have Andy House online.
Need to wait on.
Oh, we need to wait on it. Oh, yeah, nine thirty, okay.
You guys are just gonna hang around, right?
What's that?
You're gonna hang around, right?
So we've got about seven minutes until we can do the bit opening. Could go down to vouchers.
Did you, did you sign that, not to interrupt?
Yes.
You sign that?
I did. Oh. All right. Thank you. We had a, a few vouchers, yeah, and they were embedded in the. Info. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve?
Motion approved. Pay the vouchers.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second discussion.
The only discussion I would have was just a question about the, the alternative format, I liked. The other format was not as clear to read, but I did like that it would have like the departments and things that were, that they were going to it.
Yeah.
Kind of helped.
I just did this just because there were only a few.
Yeah, yeah, no, no big, yeah, it's easy to know what they're all for, so, yeah.
The new jail project, so. Yeah, and then I, usually you list out the credit card. Bills and they're not listed out here and I'll, I'll admit and it has nothing to do with trust, it has to do with training, right? That I've been trained that you always scrutinize. Credit card bills and I just want to make sure that you have scrutinized them and that you are satisfied that they're all on the up and up.
Greg Thompson, I'm assuming is for that land.
Yeah. Yep, and the look Roy one, that's for that too. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so then, Fair Board and Buildings, Travis.
Yeah, we didn't. We're not having any luck finding who owns those buildings. So. It's not on our list. Doesn't. Minutes don't reflect anything from nineteen fifty-five.
This is like a very typical problem.
So we've always assumed they were our buildings, that's what I was always told.
Yeah.
I hear saying.
We found the deeds.
There was no deeds.
And that's on the land.
Right.
And, and. Perhaps I'm just curious if a deed would show.
Lenaya, Lenaya is gonna.
Again, busy season, I started looking into it, I got about halfway there, I found where they transferred from to the city.
The land, yes.
The land, but again, your deed isn't gonna mention any of that and had no mention of lease agreements.
So, and so there's no property listed. In your shop, in other words, it's just listed as land and not property because it's tax, not taxable.
It's, it lists the build, like the beef barn and the food stand was nineteen fifty-five. It lists those, there were permits taken out then, but.
Who are they taking out by?
And you'll never find them.
Okay.
I think your best guess, just from experience of looking for stuff, and these are not always recorded, so it's hard for me to look for them. Would be city resolutions that would maybe assign that lease agreement, but again, I haven't found anything yet because I kind of got sidetracked.
Is there? The lease agreements only for the land.
Yeah, no, I'm saying like a lease agreement for the buildings.
So we did figure out that the county and the fair board somehow agreed to build them. The city doesn't, the city was completely out of the building.
Cut.
And there is a lease. To the county from the city.
For the land.
For the, for using the land. What's that date to?
Twenty forty-four, because we just redid it in twenty nineteen.
I see.
Yeah, and, and the big issue is insurance, because they won't pay out except to the owner. And if we don't know who the owner is, we're gonna have, I mean, all this insurance money is for not.
Oh, and they've been happily accepting our premiums.
No, we're not paying.
No.
We're not paying.
Well, happily accepting the fair board's premiums, that's.
But they, their agent told them that if all those buildings burn down tomorrow. They would not be able to pay them because they had no proof of ownership of the buildings.
So they are allowing some, them to insure buildings that they don't own, that seems like a.
Well, usually you have, a renter has renters insurance and an owner has owner's insurance and. The renters insurance would only cover the personal property.
Exactly, and that's what they have listed on the policy, but the buildings.
It's an easy time to hit the reset button.
Maybe we should sell it to them for a buck.
I don't even think we gotta sell it to them, there's no ownership.
Yeah.
We can't sell something we don't own.
Yeah, that's true enough.
You can create a.
Create an agreement.
You can do a claim deed and you can sell them any, any rights that you do own in it.
How about an adverse possession? That's.
No, because we're the ones renting the property.
And it has to be hostile.
Yeah.
It's possible, but it seems like that that might not be quite hidden.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the best idea I've heard, it's just I.
The extension building is ours.
Yeah.
That one we do know.
And we do have paperwork that shows that.
That's listed on our asset list.
Yeah.
We're about to.
Actually, it's not.
I thought it was.
It's not on our asset list, it's on our insurance. I, and I don't know, I mean, the asset list, like it gets added as you build things, so I don't know if it just was never added or. I don't know. That goes back to whenever it was built.
And it's been added on too.
Yeah, that kind of a building, it's pretty well anchored to the ground.
Because the four H board. Built the kitchen. Where we were sitting. So there's three meters in that building and I don't know why. I mean, why, why they're getting charged three minimums, but.
Is that same over the old bus bar?
That I couldn't tell you, I mean, there's.
Do we own that, is there? Do we own that? Is there documentation about building that?
We don't have any.
When was that built?
Yeah, there's a permit. I'd have to look on the.
The three minimums are all paid by the same entities, so. It isn't three different entities that are. Being built, right?
Two entities or two meters are paid for the same entity. One meter is paid by us. But it doesn't make any sense why it's.
I could see why the city wouldn't want it go down to one.
So who owns the transit place in the city?
No, there's an agreement on that one with the state transit.
Okay.
So, at least I don't think the city owns. But they have some sort of agreement with the transit, cause if anything were to happen to that building, the city has to pay. The proceeds back.
Isn't there a federal grant involved in building that?
Oh, I'm sure.
Yeah, that's why the buses have to be inside every night.
Somewhere.
Yeah, for one week, I know where they're at.
So it sounds like we need a little legal work done here to uh.
Well, before Mike can do anything, we can have to decide and we'll have to meet with the fair board to. See what they want.
We're willing to gift it, gift it to them.
Our interest is.
That could solve a couple of problems both for both parties, I think.
And we need to come up with a lease. Like the park board has to where we're leasing. The property to them. You know, the state leases Clay County Park to us and we lease it to the park board and we need that same type of agreement. With the fair board.
Unless we get out.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it sounds like. But still, the four H building, we'd retain ownership of.
We still need the extension building.
Yeah.
But there's currently something in place on that now.
For the rental?
Yeah.
Not between us and the fair board. It's just between the city and us.
Oh, gotcha.
But uh, uh, who owns the extension building is still a question, yeah?
Well, part of it is ours.
But it's not listed, is it? I mean, I, I think what we need to, for the extension building, certainly we need to establish ownership. Um, in the county. The county needs to control that building. Um, the fair buildings, it seems to me, um, you know, creating some kind of a. Uh, ownership in the name of the fair board would be advantageous to all parties. Whether they, they want that or not, that's another question.
Be a bit sticky to give something to someone that. A property that you don't own.
We're not gifting, it's just gonna be an understanding that, and it's gonna be in writing and.
Yeah.
There's gonna be a, a copy.
I'll need to do a little bit of work too, cause some of this is gonna be, this isn't really necessarily property law either, as far as real property law, this is. These are buildings rather than land.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
When we know ownership of the land.
Okay, just to walk through one more time then, so there is the, there is the transit building. Where the political party is always tabled during, during the fair, right? That is clearly not owned by us, not a part of this discussion.
Right.
There's the building right in front of it, uh.
Cloverhall.
Cloverhall, overhaul, overhaul, we do not have any documentation that we own.
Not that we could find.
Okay. So we have been renting.
None, none, none of the buildings.
And none of the livestock barns and the track, uh, like the.
The arena?
Arena, yep.
Well, there's no building there, so I mean, there's nothing.
There's a hundred fifty thousand dollar bleachers in there. I mean, it's a.
But that's personal property.
Okay, yep, so, but so that's not something we're even concerned about. It's just a fence around a lot, okay?
Right.
All right, and then you've got all the, all the exhibit buildings and those, there's no documentation of who owns them. Okay, but the understanding has been that the county owned all of those structures.
With, and then. And then the fair board got to use them.
And then the fair board got to use them, but without an actual written agreement.
Right.
Okay, I just wanna make sure there's a lot of different, a lot of different things. I wanna make sure I had it all clear.
And maintenance was on fair board.
And maintenance was on, and and insurance. I mean, I was looked through this insurance policy here and these buildings are all. Valued for, you know, substantial amounts of money and you're. Paying a lot of money to insure, helping three thousand dollars, thirty six hundred dollars a year to ensure stuff that they didn't. It could never have made a claim on.
Yeah, and then I was wondering about liability insurance.
That they cover.
They cover it. It's, and it's, but it's not in this policy. It's a separate policy.
Right.
That we haven't seen.
Yeah, we don't need, I mean, they have it and it's.
Cause I, I, I worry a little bit that, you know. Because the ownership of the buildings is unclear, um, that we might wind up with a liability. And, you know, we might end up with a fight on whether the fair board or the county is liable. It's.
Would we then be transferring ownership? Of uh. The four H building to?
The extension office?
Yeah.
No. That'll be part of the agreement.
Yeah, we'd keep that.
We'd keep whatever section of that building is supposed to be ours.
Oh, okay. Not the whole building.
Right, cause the kitchen is not ours. Fair board built that.
Yeah.
So I suppose whoever has those meters assigned to them, that's their chunk. That'd be the easiest way to split it.
Yep, so I think we need to figure it out and then. Get it in writing and signed off on, um, so that it's clear whose property is which.
One for sure. I don't know who the other two, I mean, fair, fair board is one, and I don't know if the leaders are the other. Cause there's, they're separate between four H leaders and four H board.
And that's electrical.
Or fair board. Well, electrical and sewer.
Water.
I would.
Yeah.
Sewer water and electric, that's city stuff. And gases, it's mid America.
But there's one furnace, so I don't know how that works.
Yeah.
When's the last uh, deed record?
For.
That owns property, is it owned by the city?
It is, transferred from the original owner to the city.
I'd have to go look it up. I wanna say it wasn't, wasn't it in the like fifties, forties? It was a while ago.
Some of these buildings were built pre-land transaction or post-land transaction. Some of that may dictate it without any other agreement with the owners.
Like if they were on there when the.
Right. If they're fixing to the land and they were sold at the bit, they were already in existence at the time of the land transfer.
But we know in that, I mean, there's, there's a record of the land transfer, so.
I can get with Linnea, please start, start doing some research.
Yeah, and then.
You know, previously, we talked about the four H building. This is, I can't remember if it was earlier this year or last year, you know, we've been talking about putting a roof on it. For a pretty substantial chunk of change and that whole discussion was us, but if we don't actually own. You know, I, then that I think makes that a little bit, that discussion a little bit different. And I think I was a little wary about that investment in that property in general, so I think, I don't, this is.
Yeah, but if you don't fix it, cause there is no timeline for them to move, so if we don't fix it, then we'll be out of building also.
Yeah. And if, uh, you know, if we don't have overhaul, we've got our trailers that we need to store there. Do we have an alternative place? We just rent a storage unit for them if?
No, we're good. Um, because the, the new law enforcement center will house those trailers after the.
Soon enough, yeah, yeah.
And then we can segue into.
So we can put them in a storage unit in the interim if we needed to.
If we had to, but we've got the. Uh, power and electricity in basement garage. That's, that'll be the segue for those trailers.
All right.
So if we're done with the fair buildings for right now, is that?
Clear as mine, yep.
So power and electricity in the basement garage, the generator. Um, the generator and the small pod trailer, we're gonna park in the basement here. So there's not, so there's not as many trailers in Cloverhall, not taking up as much, gonna take up about the equal amount of space, I think. But we need to put a, a fifty amp service in, some are added to whatever's down there, so we can plug the generator in all the time.
We made any progress, Andy, on moving that car?
No, I'll get to it on my list. Thank you, this one. I don't know when you need it, but. Not gonna happen this week. I can't, I don't know when move-in day is. For the campers and train boats out there.
Coming up.
I would assume so.
Good discussion with the other departments. Lane's got a question.
Uh, well. I was just gonna tell you, generally the move-in day is uh, the week after D days. So, two weeks, two weeks.
Three weeks.
Three weeks. And uh, I'll have to look, but it's, I don't think it's fifty amp. I think it's a thirty amp twist lock. For the electrical on it.
Well, the new one in the box was a fifty. The new, uh, the new breaker.
Okay, the breaker might be, but I think it's only a thirty amp requirement.
Okay.
It's, if you, where the generators plugged in, uh, Leo Powell's the one that put it in, he wrote on the. Reciprocal what it is.
Okay.
All right. Anything else?
If we're okay with spending that money to do that.
Yeah, we'd have to do it in the long run anyway.
Well, no, because it won't be stored here.
Oh, okay.
It's gonna get us through the year.
This is sort of the short term, but in the future, we may, we may end up putting it here temporarily. From time to time. Uh, is space might.
Well, and that's the other thing.
Flow out there.
The generator may stay here, just for that reason. I don't know.
Right. Yeah, and like I said, week ago, it's not a bad idea to have, like say for the two pod trailers. Have one in each place so that we're not housing our emergency, all of our emergency equipment in the first spot.
So the tornado would have to make a real circuitous route to.
Just really big one. Doing that.
Yeah.
Anything else on that?
I don't think so.
All right, so should we go back to um, bid opening?
I have a bid here that was received this morning and on our advertisement, the deadline was four forty-five yesterday. However, they emailed me yesterday to say that they sent it by. UPS. And there was a delay and it was stuck in Fargo, wasn't gonna arrive on time. They wanted to know if we would still consider it, so I'm gonna leave that. In your hands, but that was delivered this morning.
Michael, I'm looking. Might have to come back to this.
Okay, but we can look.
We've had this before and the discretion is up to us.
Yeah, should be some discretion there.
And since we haven't opened any bids or done anything.
And it was clearly mailed well ahead of the deadline.
Part of the outage yesterday.
Yep.
I'm comfortable deferring to what we've done as standard practice if that had been in place.
Yep. And we have other bids?
State bid.
You have another one in the folder there, and that one did come early. So this is um, including the price of the, of a Explorer, twenty twenty-five Ford Explorer. Police interceptor. Plus trade-in for the twenty sixteen, um, forty-one thousand nine hundred.
Who's that from?
This is Vermillion Ford.
What did they give us for a trade-in? How much?
Four thousand. With Nelson for the trade-in.
Any miles? I don't know that because. Uh, it's something a hundred and fifty.
None of them are church miles.
Church miles.
None of them were driven by a little old lady on Sunday.
Only for church.
This one from?
Uh, can't tell yet. All right, Nelson Auto Center, Fergus Falls, Minnesota. And twenty twenty-five Ford Peace Utility All Wheel Drive Gas. And the price of the vehicle is forty-eight thousand nine nineteen. Um, with another eleven hundred twenty-nine dollars for. Additional equipment. Less the dealer discount of forty-six hundred. Subtotal is forty-five thousand four hundred forty-eight dollars. And the trade-in on the twenty sixteen Ford is thirty-three hundred for a total cash price of forty-two thousand one forty-eight. That one's from Nelson.
Forty-two thousand one, forty-two thousand one forty-eight, yeah. Vermillion Ford was forty-one thousand, forty-one nine, forty-eight.
For comparison, I, I have a state contract, state award contract was Lam Motors. Their, their base cost is forty-eight thousand one hundred twenty-five, and then there's a few adjustments and, and reductions be, you know, to match our specs. Um, so to buy that vehicle would be forty-six thousand seven hundred and twenty. Lam Motors out of Oneida.
And Vermillion Ford was a twenty twenty-five also, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Is Lam, is that a Ford?
Yeah, so, okay.
So, um, if you wanna take a look at the bids and.
Make sure they all need specs.
Make sure they all need specs and then come back with a recommendation next week.
For um, or a Dodge Drangle, just uh, for the record. Um, Wagner Auto has a Dodge Drangle that would meet these specs for forty-three thousand twenty-six dollars.
All right, well, we got, we got some good bids there.
But you say your deputies like the Fords?
Yeah, if it wasn't a major cost difference, uh, Ford Explorers preferred to the Drangle. And in this case, the uh, Vermillion Ford bids less than, than that. Now, uh, keeping in mind these uh, bits uh, from Lam Motors and Wagner Auto don't involve the trade-in, so. So we'd wanna look at the, their bases comparison, but.
All right.
But Andy, look them over, I guess, then.
Yep.
Go from there. It looks like the stars align.
Yeah.
And in town.
Yeah, it's kind of, kind of what we're expecting to see, so.
Yeah. Great.
So you want to put this off till next Tuesday?
Just to make sure all the specs line up.
Good.
Unless you already know.
Um. If, I mean, I have, I have comfort um, that Vermillion Ford knows what we want, but I haven't seen what they've got there, so.
Yeah, they're, they've, they've given us a pretty.
Okay.
We could still probably act on it today, I guess, if you just wanna look over that one and make sure that it meets.
I, I kinda gotta get going. I got, got another thing going on, so if you wanna put it on for next Tuesday, that'd be fine.
That's great. Do you like that?
Yes.
Of course, we could just, you know, make the motion to accept Vermillion Ford as long as it meets Andy's.
It meets specs?
As long as it's.
I'm, I moved that we accept the little bit from Vermillion Ford as long as it matches the specs that we put in the bid second.
There's a motion and a second. Um, any further discussion?
I would almost amend that to pending uh, Sheriff House approval.
Okay. Okay.
Cause there may be other considerations that come in.
Okay.
Would be.
I'd be comfortable with that amendment.
Okay.
So in that case, if it's, if it's okay, I should just go ahead and order the car, otherwise bring it back to your attention next week?
Yeah. And we're okay with trading the car off, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Unless Dave wants it.
No.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Do you, you're okay with that amendment?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's kind of what I was trying to get to.
Alright, um, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thanks, Andy.
Anything else for me?
Looks good. Employee flu vaccines.
We're just looking to approve paying for?
Is that?
Flu vaccines?
Yes.
Move to approve saying for the flu vaccines.
There's a motion and a second to approve, boy, flu vaccines. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. County properties in Wakanda. Oh, boy.
Oh, this one is one packet, okay.
Yeah.
Those are some funny little pieces.
Alright, so uh, the first thing you got was the spreadsheet, and that spreadsheet has all of the county property. Um, I highlighted some in yellow, backside is just your legal description, so it's all on one. And then I figured if you wanted to discuss the, the beacon ones or aerials, they've got ownership and legal descriptions at the bottom, we can go one by one or however you wanna tackle it.
So are these generally something that then we got, it's like tax fees or something, or how, how do we come by these?
That's a good question.
They're really weird, like that one little, it's, looks like it's like a fence across the middle of somebody's yard or something.
Yeah, and I, I apologize, I'm not super prepared, I care, called Carrie this morning, I know you were gonna discuss it today, but I wasn't sure what you wanted from me, so I will do my best to answer questions and look into things as needed.
Is that an easement? Like, look at that one, what we get, like, goes to the tank, is that just like a?
Yeah, I don't know how we got that one, but that's the one we wanted to talk about. And then this one, that shows Slant Street at the top.
Yeah.
So if we wanna start with those two, cause they're in Wakanda. And Lina, do you have? What they're, we have values, I mean, this one with that little strip with propane tank.
Okay, so.
Twenty-seven dollars.
Yep, I wanted to clarify something with the one behind the pit, so that would be the second image in your packet. Um. It's a five by fifty strip of land, it was found property last year, which means it has not been assessed for since the nineteen thirties or forties, it kinda got left off as things got platted and sold and was just an unassessed piece of property. Um, my job as Director of Equalization, when I find those is to figure out ownership and then assess it. Um, I found that it was last owned by a banker who purchased it um, back in the nineteen thirties, that's that BA Melgar that you see as ownership at the bottom, the county does not own this piece. Um, BA Melgar and heirs and such does. Um, I've talked to Michael about this one a little bit, we decided the best option right now is to put it in care of the owners of the pit, because their propane tank is on it. I'm, from there, I'm not really sure, I can just clarify, that's who owns it, it is assessed as of twenty twenty-four.
And are they comfortable accepting it then?
Mm-hmm.
And, and they don't mind, you know, it might cost them an extra dollar in taxes or something, but.
I, I have not had contact with them.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah.
They would like it.
I figured they wanted it, with their propane tank there. So from there, I'm not sure what their next steps are, I just know that's where that one sits, and I wanted to clarify, the county does not own that.
That one's very similar to the county, I'm sure it would be the same, but county has no interest in it, so. That's just, they have a private entity, want to do something, they can do, they can do so, otherwise I think just put it on our tax roll and that's kind of passive, we might be able to.
So what do we do, sign a quit claim?
Well, we don't own it, so.
No, but we, it would just give us, the quit claim would just uh, transfer any right that we would have to it to them.
We, we do not own it.
And I don't think we have here. I think here from the conversation that we had, that it's clear, very similarly to that ten foot strip, that the county has no interest, so.
But that's, that was the first step they wanted us to go through was the, just sign over whatever interests.
We talked about doing quiet title.
Quiet title.
Yeah, now is if the ownership is unknown, which going back to the fair board quickly may be an option, but uh, but probably not, cause it's not, that's land, so. This is land, but that, the problem with quiet title is that we were able to track ownership. Um, so we couldn't pursue quiet title, I think it's gonna be the same thing here, we know who the heirs are from what it sounds like, so there's no heirs, and so it's known owner, but now it's just gonna be a matter of the owners. The owners of the pit who have their propane tank on it could do something if they so choose. But as far as we go, we just tax the heirs of BA Melgar. And what?
But they're not the heirs of Melgar.
No, but that's between the pit and the Melgar, yeah.
Yep, but we don't know who the Melgar heirs are.
Correct, we know that they are the owners, whoever they are. So eventually, if they never pay us taxes on it, then we could eventually own it, and then we could give it to the herd. Sure, get it on payroll.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Does, does the pit own each of the adjoining pieces, so along the forty foot stretch?
No.
No, the one to the north is someone else.
So they might want it. So.
But I, I just wanted to clarify, that one's not in our hands, I guess, is what Michael and I agreed upon after talking about it.
So we could encourage the pit to watch for a tax sale potentially somewhere down the road. Or they could go pursue their own legal.
Right.
Device. Their tank.
Well, that tank's been sitting there for
Oh, yeah.
Years, I mean.
Yeah, and, and they own the property just to the, I don't know if you call it Wakanda South.
They like on point, so.
That's true, yeah.
Or is it Wakanda East?
Oh, that's definitely Wakanda South.
Okay.
They could take it under adverse possession though, too, right?
Yeah, they could, but yeah.
Then this, this top one that says Slant.
Mm-hmm, the one between Slant and Ohio, I think that's kind of the one that started the whole conversation about surplus property.
Well, that one's, that one's not nothing, you know, not quite enough room to put a house on it, but.
My understanding was, um, there's a conversation between Clay Union Electric and Rod that kind of started. The conversation of me finding what's county owned.
So, does the county need this property for any reason?
No.
There's no access to it either. Which is an issue.
Well, there would be, the, that strip with a yellow.
They have a road there, right?
That's an easement?
That's supposed to be a road, I mean, that's a future road, there's nothing there, but I don't know how we ended up with it, and I don't know why we would have ever needed.
And then who, who owns this large vacant piece that the little bots of land is set in?
You talking this one?
Yeah.
Let me get that pulled up for you.
Off of, off of Slant, right, west.
Um, to the south.
South, yeah, so.
Yeah, right, west of Ohio.
Yep.
Yeah.
I have a Carl Libby. That's Carl with a K.
Uh, the the house to the north. Right, Carl Libby owns the eggplant.
Do you have a, a value on that little piece?
I don't yet, but I can get one if you'd like me to.
Cause if it's under five hundred dollars, then we can s- just sell it to this Carl Libby, cause it's, looks like it's already part of their field, I mean, it's, it makes the only logical sense. If it's over five hundred, we've gotta sell it at the auction.
I think the dollar went up this year. I think it might be like twenty-five hundred now.
But that's gonna be fifty bucks.
I would wonder a little bit if you have three, I mean, it, it looks from an aerial image as though it is a part of that, that parcel, but if you have three abutting landowners, I, I would just have a little slight discomfort about selecting which of the ones we're gonna sell it to.
Yeah, but if it's in there, if it's in that property line, I mean, somebody's gotta cross the street from here.
Well, but this, this property owner
And I might wanna have. And I bet this person already assumes it's theirs.
You're probably right, yeah.
You can see how it's been farmed, and they're farming through it.
So I can, I can tell you that STCL six thirteen four uh, was there's a twenty twenty-four change to it, and so it's any surplus property appraised pursuant to six thirteen two, which gives the procedure for doing the appraisal. Uh, at two thousand five hundred dollars or less, uh, may be sold by the governing board at a private or public sale without notice. Gives more detail beyond that, but it's kind of starting point.
Depends on if we do it as ag land, transitional land, commercial, residential. What the assessed would be, I'd say since it's used as part of the ag field, rough estimate, if it's ag land is three hundred and thirty-five.
Dollars.
Dollars.
Who owns the, the farmland?
Carl Libby.
Oh, yeah.
What's the house to the north, who owns that?
Ken, Henning?
Lin, Linda.
Yes, so.
It's in care of, it's, so.
You'd be able to figure it out by next meeting then, which, all it's classified.
Yeah.
That we can talk about this again.
Clearly been farmed through by their piece. Isn't it curious that Slant Street is on the square?
Well, it's because of the railroad.
Yeah, yeah.
It's the only square road.
Yeah, yes, the only, yeah.
Yeah, but it was slanted.
And holes, yeah.
Right.
Yes. It is very strange, it's like they could probably Wakanda.
Yeah.
Any other properties that we ought to be talking about in the future? Like, the other ones are all pretty much in use in ways that we didn't understand.
Well, the three hundred and twelfth street one and four sixty-two. That's Brower, right? Brower's pits, yeah, so we don't wanna get rid of that. Right, Rod? We don't wanna get rid of Brower's pits. And we don't wanna get rid of the one along Timber Road either.
What's the one below the hill by the railroad?
It's in the river, isn't it?
Um, there is one, there, the one right before that, Travis. There's one on Chestnut, did you not, oh. Did I lose a piece of paper?
Oh, I know.
There's a lot of odds and ends down there, I believe some of those adjacent ones are owned by the city. Again, I haven't looked into that as much, I just kind of highlighted the ones that maybe were unclear.
Is it the yellow or the?
It's both.
It's both, yeah. Hate it when they have. I think we should sell that one, too.
Mm-hmm.
The yellow one?
For sure, the yellow one.
Yeah.
What about, I mean, the other one doesn't seem to be doing anything useful either.
No, but I wonder if there's gonna be a buyer for it.
To the west of that, is that railroad property?
Yeah, the railroad's using, oh, we're using the very edge of ours already, it's like.
To the east is.
Might be the one that the city owns. So we've got as you come down the hill there, those first two pieces where they've got that like monument to, what is it? Church or the school has the monument there, those are owned by a David, and I'm gonna say the ra- last name wrong, but it's Der- Derushay? Doroshi, there you go, he owns those first two, and then um. The city owns the one to the north, and that, it's like one parcel, even though it's divided by the road. Um, and then the small triangle with that north piece that we own.
That triangle, that house to the south, the triangle's on like Donna, Diana Brown. Seven West, probably.
This is Lane, just with an information, uh, Dave Derushi died a few years ago, and all asset, all assets were given to the Catholic Church.
It was kind of a tax sale. Broker, I think, over time, it's every call.
So on, which one does he own, Dave, or did?
The triangle.
The yellow triangle.
The yellow triangle?
He owned this?
He owns these two.
Oh, okay, but we don't.
The city owns these two.
Like where the Mason Rock is from.
But we're not worried about any of that, we're just worried about these two.
I was, I was unclear which one he was.
That's Dave.
And this is the city.
Right, so I was wondering if the city wants to buy this little, this kind of railroad yard there.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I'd give it to them.
And it's one parcel, and this is all for the city. And this is us, is us, we own both of those, they're two parcels.
Oh, yeah, this house is up there, you know, overlooking the block, nice place.
Oh, city, or Dave only, city owns this, is one parcel, and the city owns this.
I see.
And being there two parcels.
Okay, what's this, he's speaking?
Um, I was.
That's railroad, right, that's railroad driveway. I don't remember how wide railway, railroad highways are.
I don't think they're standing just like, where they have them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then this little piece by Timber Road.
Yeah, we wanna keep that.
That's Crossroads County Shop.
Yep, cause we don't lose those trees.
No, that's a good windbreak.
Yeah.
Interesting.
And this last one here, is this on the Nebraska side, but?
Unclear, unclear, a lot of it was taken on tax sale, it's just all in the river and we own it. I, I did my best to read between the lines of the county property and which ones you may want to know more about, so if it's just there.
Yeah, not paying taxes on it, so. Make a water trail, that sounds good, yep.
They are um, south of Missouri Street, so they're nowhere close to the park, but.
Yeah, there's one out there already, we can, we can add a little Clay County spur, like, as long as you're just going around in a circle right here, around the Clay County whirlpool.
Slightly unrelated, I will just say that I came on the takeout, uh, Clay County Park on the river this week and uh, ran into five kayakers who kayak this big they're, you know, they're through, through guys, and one of them spontaneously, having no idea who I was or anything about, and he said, this park is a hidden gem. And he went on and on about it's so clean, and how great it was to stay there, and it was just like yeah, yeah, unprovoked, I said nothing about the park, he, he, you know. We were having a conversation with paddles, and he, he just.
Looks through kayakers, it's our county's front door, so.
About what great, what, what a great hidden gem it was, and how glad he was to be there, and how they'd be coming back every year. I was thrilled. Wasn't like that a few years ago.
Michael, do those statutes apply to townships also then, on property transfers?
Yeah, I believe so, it says any governing board, um, but I, I think it's just whoever. I believe the answer is yet, after the governing board or the political subdivision has made a determination on surplus property, that's six thirteen two. I bet six thirteen one's gonna say the same thing, yep, political subdivision or governing board, but it's not county or city specific. It's whatever political subdivision has ownership.
And that was what, six?
Yeah, six thirteen is where it's found at, and like six thirteen. Yeah, six thirteen is where it's found at and like six thirteen Two lays out the procedure, six thirteen four uh lays out the The dollar amount and the kind of the process that you can do with or without notice, private sale versus In process, if it's over that twenty five hundred dollars. We go so far as talk about municipal uh Zoo animals, but I don't think we have that problem.
It's the bats.
So next week, um, just so I'm clear, you would like assessed values for the ones in the city and the one in Wakanda. Those three parcels. Okay.
That'd be great.
Yeah, and then let me look at six thirteen two, because that'll be the actual appraisal process, which has to do with individuals from the county.
Thank you.
So it'd be good to get your input, but then ultimately I think to follow the procedure, we gotta go through six thirteen two.
Perfect. Great, sounds good. Anything else for me on those?
I think that's it. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Lina. Thanks for always bringing so much great information. You've always got clarity, numbers, specificity. It's awesome.
Okay, uh, anything on Clay County Park?
Uh, nope, nothing new.
Um, nothing for me.
Okay. During jurisdiction.
We had a meeting last night in City Hall. And uh, and we had thirty something show around forty, I think. And uh, there was a lot more Interest Expressed last night, uh Sean from CCOG went through through his uh Uh spiel about with the maps and things. And there were questions about the The maps, uh, a couple of folks Question why we would have joint jurisdiction down around Below the airport and down towards Walker's Landing. And uh One thing that came up was was that there aren't The map is projected Doesn't have enough landmarks on it to really tell Where the boundaries are of joint jurisdiction. And we pointed out that there's really no change. There's really no change in area. There's a few little minor changes in it. Where where what is within and without the Joint jurisdiction, but uh Uh, there's been a, and it's something that I brought up Months ago About The map that they were showing us doesn't have enough detail to know exactly where the boundaries are. And so So I brought it up, somebody else brought it up and then I uh, I didn't during the discussion Embarrass Sean with why why didn't you put in the, you know, I suggested that they just add Uh highways and or rivers, which would really make it a lot easier to Pinpoint exactly where where the boundaries are. And he said that they're Uh, the problem is, is that um Some of the other overlays, like the the layer that would include water and would include uh Uh highways are approximate. Those layers are approximate because they were taken from uh Uh Air photos that were not calibrated. And uh, so it'd be Quite a chore to put those overlays on and and Have them useful as as boundary markers. But he promised me that uh, his His cartographer has been working or wanted to work with it. He's been really swamped and Said some other scheduling issues and that's why he hasn't gotten to it yet. But he's he said that they would, they would work to take care of it, especially since we've had public comment. And I got a message from Uh Drew, I think this morning, uh That we're going to have another set of meetings. And we're to choose between four different Possible meeting dates Uh, late this month. So.
This is for the second reading of the rezone for the Property off nineteen or?
Yeah, yeah, it's for that one.
Okay.
Did you get to see your annexation agreement?
Haven't seen it yet. But That's one of my thoughts. I I do want to see that before Uh, before we we act on on uh The second reading.
Yeah, I attended that last meeting and then so the city passed pending the attachment of that.
Correct.
Uh, but the county had already acted and so they simply passed approval. Regardless, is that correct? So.
Well, we just, we both the city and the and the city planning and our planning Passed uh A first reading. It's pending, the cities is pending on uh Acceptance of the uh annexation agreement. And We've talked about annexation agreements in our small, small subcommittee a few times, uh, a couple of months ago. And uh Kind of come to the conclusion that annexation agreements aren't necessarily bad, but they can On a case by case be basis, be something that we would have an interest in as a county.
Okay.
And so As they come up, uh My position is, is that we as a county planning commission and as a county commission We want to know what those Agreements are before we act on.
That seems wise. And so then, so the as as long as then uh, the county planning and zoning will have that while ahead of that meeting, you'll be able to review it. And then when you're gonna vote You would, if you don't like it, you'll just vote no because.
That's my, that and and they go back, it would go back to uh Move it back to for more negotiation. That's my personal opinion. And uh, and I think that uh At least a majority, the planning commission board would agree with that.
And would that action kick it all the way back to a new first reading since the city's approval of the first reading was only pending approval of the Uh, the annexation agreement? So, okay, so it kind of kind of be a bit of a setback, but those things happen, so, okay.
So I mean, they have to do that now. If they approved, you've already approved the first reading?
Yeah.
And the city approved the first reading with the annexation agreement?
Correct.
Pen pending approvals.
They still don't match, see.
They don't match, but that's a substantial change. So you both have to have your first readings again, right?
Uh, I think so, I uh.
I I would read it as you would.
How we interpret And accept that uh
But you've already moved to go to the second reading.
Yeah.
As written.
Well, now with this amendment in it, that's a substantial change. So you have to go back to the first reading.
I wouldn't say it's not an amendment. It's an an attachment. It's a separate.
I don't care if you're putting it in the document. It's that's a substantial change. I'm not the lawyer. We paid somebody for that, but would you consider that a substantial change?
I'd I'd wanna look at it, but I think that if you're adding attachments, you're probably If you're if you're adding to the agreement, right? And you're not clarifying something or.
Right, you're not changing ands and thos.
But but the.
What would be, what it would be Um, annexation, annexation, annexation agreements are between the city And the property owner at the time of the agreement being signed.
Yeah.
So it transfers in time To the lot owners that would be within that area. Uh, and It depends on what they put in the annexation agreement. All it may do is say that at the time of annexation It would lay out the Terms For The city to assume utilities, it'd be mainly electric at that point and possibly water. And uh Uh, any connections to the city as far as its transportation and that sort of thing. I think that's That's a possibility that those would be in there. It could be simpler than that, could be more than that.
I think it really.
Depends on Depends on how How extension, how extensive and how Intrusive that annexation agreement would be.
Yeah, I think that, you know, just sort of thinking about the the order of and whether you need to rehear it. I mean, the 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 Action item in front of you was a rezone.
Yeah.
So it wasn't a plat. It wasn't. So this wouldn't be attached to the rezone. The rezone is just a change of the zoning ordinance to rezone the property to a different Zoning than it is now. You approve.
It's the new joint jurisdiction that you're talking about, right?
No, he's talking, well, you're talking right now about The rezone of the property off nineteen to allow new development.
Yeah. Yeah.
So the It's not the It's not the joint.
Not the comprehensive plan.
It's not the joint jurisdiction zoning ordinance that you're putting the annexation plan into?
No, this is just a rezone of that property.
Okay, I was thinking you were, this was the new.
I was realizing there was weird. I think we're modeling a couple.
That's coming. That's coming, but that's a few months out yet.
I was on the same page with Travis there.
Okay, okay. No, this is just the second reading of that uh Uh, right, that property, that property rezone.
Yeah, I was just thinking through process. It's you guys had voted first.
Yeah.
And then they voted, but it was pending a condition. And so I was just thinking, oh, okay, well. Yeah.
And most of the things that I think would be of Import here Uh, would be those utility transfers and that's all covered by state law anyway. And in fact, our new comprehensive plan has verbiage in it that uh Uh, ensures that the comprehensive Plan Complies with any state or fed and federal law. We spell it out in there. Just, you know, it's gonna happen anyway, but it's it's good to Uh Have anyone that's relying on the comprehensive plan to understand that that underlying law exists.
Yep.
All right. Sounds good. Uh, any other commissioner reports? Stuff happening?
Moved going to executive session for personnel.
Second.
Some motion and a second To go into executive session?
I don't need it. Goodbye, we throw her out again.
Vote to. Is there a motion to go to executive session?
Move to come out of executive session, second.
Some motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any further business? Some motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.